Good evening and welcome to our June Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda tonight, we have a really, really special presentation. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Sullivan because Steve has quite a bit more information about this presentation than I do. So Steve?
Thank you all for being here tonight. As many of you know, I've seen you, I assume you've seen it in the news, last year, last week was the celebration of the Normandy invasion and D-Day. June 6th, 1944 was the 80th celebration. And so in honor of that and as well as honor of this next person I'm going to call up, we wanted to do a certificate of appreciation. So Almus, if you can come on up, somebody maybe help roll him? So while he's getting here, Almus Raymer is actually my uncle by marriage. My wife's here tonight and he was married to my mother-in-law's sister for a number of years. Almus is 99 years old, turned 99 in March and was in Italy during the Normandy D-Day invasion. His unit was credited with the first unit to enter Rome and take it back from the Germans. Almus was joined in '43, I think he was drafted, is that right, Almus? He was drafted in '43 and served until February of '45. His unit served 344 days in combat in World War II. Almus was injured during the service, but during his service, he received the Bronze Star, which is the fourth highest medal that the United States issues. He received a Purple Heart, Combat Action Ribbon, World War II Campaign Medal, European, African, Middle Eastern Medal, and many others, including Good Conduct, Honorable Discharge, others. He served in the 88th Battalion, the 350th Infantry Division, C Company, and was in a fighting hole and got artillery shelled and that was kind of his ticket home, I guess. He was born, not March 25th, 1925, and I've already served his military dates. So in honor of his service and his involvement in World War II and D-Day, we've got a certificate of recognition that we want to honor to him. It's in honor of the 80th anniversary of his service in the United States Army and the D-Day invasion, the invasion of Normandy that took place June 6th, 1944. Mr. Raymer has earned distinction by receiving the Bronze Star for his acts of heroism and Purple Heart for his selfless sacrifice while in the line of duty. Awarded on this 11th day on June 20, 2024, and signed by the Mayor, Mayor Esther Reed. So Almus, thank you very much for your service. Thank you for everything that you've done. I've been in, he's been in my family for 32 years now. Not a man of many words, but it looks like he wants to talk.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Brother Mark, I appreciate everything you've done for me and the rest of people's help in this. And that's what you call it, brother man.
All right. So what he's referencing is Mark Crawford's here with us. Mark has been helping him with a contractor issue that he's had his house and he's helping him rebuild or actually finish and build a patio cover that kind of got botched. Almus actually was on the local news recently related to that and that's what he's kind of referencing. So Mark, thank you for what you're doing. Mark's a fellow veteran and saw a need and spoke up and he's going to do the contract work and get it taken care of. So thank you. All right, good? You good, Almus? I did want to say one thing, one thing that he told me one time, it's actually, I've got it in a document that they gave me, but he said his single piece of advice for the younger generation is to grow up. And so I thought that was kind of fitting these days, so I just wanted to go ahead and share that.
So Steve, also, I know this is not near as important as those other medals, but we did want to, on behalf of myself and the town council, we wanted to present you with a key to the city. So here is a key to the city for you and it'll get you into anything you want inside of the city limits of Smyrna.
If it doesn't, call her.
That's right, that's right. So this is a true American hero right here and we are so blessed to have him right here in the town of Smyrna. So thank you so much. It's not something you get to see every day. We will now move into our public comment portion. And for those of you that don't know, to sign up for public, to sign up for public comments, you just need to sign up 24 hours prior to our meeting, so before close of business on the day before our meeting. And you can speak on any topic that you choose to for three minutes. So our first person to speak is going to be George Powell. And if you'll come forward, and when you come to speak, if you'll state name, address, if you live in the town limits, and just for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Perfect.
Great.
My name's George Powell, I live 101 Dale Street. I'm not within town limits, but I will be within, you know, the new proposed, what I'm speaking on. So I wanted to state that I'm in opposition to Agenda Item 8E, which will be discussed later in this meeting. The reason I'm speaking today is to bring forward three main concerns surrounding this new development that will directly impact my property and my small community. My wife and I own the corner lot that is next to the proposed connection of Dale Street into the new community. It is my understanding, based on the map, that it will be the only entrance and exit for the new community onto Ammerville Road. What if any impact studies have been done on how this will affect our streets and the traffic through our neighborhood by adding hundreds of new cars? Our community streets are already riddled with potholes and it should be noted how difficult and dangerous it is to make a left turn out of the neighborhood from Drew Street onto Ammerville Road. My next concern involves the location of proposed amenity section for the new community as shown on the map. It's in the bottom right corner when we discuss it. When talking to the planning department, they told me it would likely be a dog park, a fire pit, or some form of social gathering location. This is deeply concerning because we live here and I do not think that this community should put something that would promote loitering, loud noises, and potentially foul smells directly next to my home. I do not understand why this would be approved, the developer putting this right up against our pre-existing community instead of putting these proposed amenities within the houses they are going to build. In addition, what allowances being made for natural vegetation to remain? The tree line is the only barrier to help against flooding, which brings me to my final concern. Our community is already affected by flooding and drainage issues, heavy rains after heavy rainstorms. If you have ever driven through the neighborhood after a storm, my yard and my neighbors' yards flood significantly. This has occurred for all the years that we have lived there and I've documented how badly the tree line between our property and the current church floods through photos and videos. I would like to know what actions will be taken to prevent additional flooding into my yard and my neighbors' yards by the addition of all these new homes. Again, I believe the removal of the natural vegetation that seems to be the only help managing some of the flooding will lead to further drainage and flooding issues for the existing community. In conclusion, I ask that you take into consideration not just the value of these new proposed homes, but also the quality of life for the existing community that will be directly impacted by this new development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we will address some of your concerns when we get to that item. Yvonne Decker.
Yes, I'm Yvonne Decker. I live at 8320 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road.
Is it in the town limits?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm concerned with 8286 Rocky Fork Ammerville. I'm opposed to having this built. It's going to surround the side and back of my home, backing right up against it. The houses will be on an uphill grade that will look down on, to the back of my patio and into my home. In the process of the building, they will destroy my property. I've had destruction to three sides of my property over the past four years from all the building that has been done and promised to be fixed and nothing's ever happened. I have been told that they could put up a privacy fence, a six-foot privacy fence would do nothing but block any wind. It won't provide privacy. If someone is standing two stories above you on elevated ground, the privacy fence won't do any good. In addition, while building these properties, these construction vehicles use my property the entire process, to the point that I have video of me nearly being run over in my front yard by a large construction vehicle. They've destroyed trees and flower beds on my property, in addition to other destruction. All the destruction so far is coming out of my pocket. There's also a large amount of trash from the construction materials and food containers. This also is, will cause flooding even though it's been said they will provision for this. The subdivision that was built across the street floods every time it rains. The retention pond being placed right up against my property will be a hazard. I do have a small child living with me and I understand these ponds are maintained, are supposed to be maintained, but they just sit, the one across the street sits like a swamp, like sitting sludge, and the mosquito population has built their own subdivision. We didn't have an issue with mosquitoes before the swamp. There will be blasting right up against my fence and I have critters and pins that will be right at that point. And blasting does do damage to your home, especially when it's that close, no matter what anybody says. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cynthia Gossett. Seeing nothing else under public comments, I will call our meeting to order. And tonight, Chaplain Bob Horn with the Southern Police Department is going to come forward and do our prayer. And our pledge tonight is going to be by Smyrna Police Chief Jason Urban. So if you'll all stand with us, please.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we're indeed thankful for another beautiful day that you've allowed us to enjoy and as we come together this evening, we come before Thy throne to ask Your presence upon this meeting. Pray to be with all those that are involved in the decisions of the town and we pray that these decisions may be in the best interest of all that are involved. Things for our future, things for our current situations. Pray that you help them to have the wisdom to be able to look at all the needs of all the people that are here. Pray to be with each one of us as we live in this community and pray that we become the citizens that we ought to be and that we contribute as well as we can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call for us.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Peoples?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell?
Present.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
Here.
Okay. Item four is approval or corrections of the minutes of the May 14th, 2024 regular meeting, the May 30th, 2024 special called and workshop meetings, and the June 5th special call meeting of the town council. Ben, are these in order?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Counsel, any additions or corrections to any of these?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's pass. Amber Jeff, any correspondence, communications, awards, or recognitions?
None for me.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. And our consent agenda are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine and not necessarily needing individual discussion. We do vote on these as a whole, but if there is an item that a council member would like to vote on individually or has questions, we can do that. But I do always like to read this so the council know, council as well as those that are here in the audience and those that are at home know what we're voting on. I'll ask you to be patient with us tonight because we have quite a few. So Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement for the design of water line improvements on Front Street. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual water, sewer, and gas material bids. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number two for the 1R lift station project. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Conica Minolta for the lease of two printers for the police department roll call and records areas. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement to accept the U.S. Department of Homeland Security State and Local Cyber Security Grants administered by the state of Tennessee. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number four with Clery Construction for the Spring Hill Drive Extension Project. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the scope and fee proposal with energy, land, and infrastructure for the Industrial Boulevard Retaining Wall and Guard Rail Repair Project. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease license agreement with the state of Tennessee for two Gateway Monument signs on State Route One, which is Lowry Street. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with volunteer paving for construction services for the Rock Springs Road over Harts Branch Bridge Project. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Boland Professional Engineers LLC for construction engineering and inspection services for the Rock Springs Road over Harts Branch Bridge Project. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with T-DOT relative to the town being reimbursed for mowing, road projects, and litter pickup along all state routes in the town limits. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Hawkins Asphalt Paving LLC to perform milling and resurfacing on various roads during fiscal year 2025. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Sessions Paving to oversee our annual road repair and maintenance contract. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Rutherford County to maintain traffic signals at I-40 and State Route 266 and I-40 and State Route 452. Item O is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year extension agreement with Rollins Construction for concrete repairs. And Item P is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Kimmerly Horn and Associates relative to the professional services for the upgrade to the major thoroughfare plan, bicycle, and pedestrian plan. Counsel, any questions or anything you want to pull off and vote on individually?
I lost you on number two. Can you start over?
I don't know that I have the breath to. Anything you'd like to add, questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Tonight, under Old Business, we have five public hearings. Our first public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2425. Hi, Rex.
Hello, Mayor, Counsel. The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 52.57 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property. And we're excited that there are no changes from the prior year that we asked that you adopt.
We're excited about that, too. Questions or comments for Rex?
Thanks, Rex. Appreciate it.
Since there are no questions for Rex, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against our tax rate. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to counsel for a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Tax rate passes. Item B is also a public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2024. Rex?
Yes, ma'am. We have two new amendments since the workshop. The Capitol Projects Parks Ice Rink and Pickleball Courts, 957 account, has been increased by $75,000 now that the numbers have been determined for the paving. And the latest addition is for the Event Center. And it results from an incorrect Excel formula in calculating part-time employees. And the salaries and various payroll accounts total $64,800. We ask that you appropriate this.
And just to remind everybody, in regards to the ice rink slash pickleball court, it's not that we're adding more to the ice rink, it's just we're going to use that base that we have for the ice rink to put in pickleball courts so that we can use those until the ice rink is used during those three months. Mike Moss, three months?
Two months.
Two months? So that's the change with that. So we just wanted to get more use. Questions or comments for Rex?
Yeah, let me make a quick comments somewhat related. One of the things, one of the committees that I serve on is the Rutherford County Library System. And one of the things that we've been looking at, at the urgency of the community basically is that our fund balance seems to have been creeping up over the years. So we voted at our last board meeting to issue rebates to the municipalities to lower that fund balance that the library system is holding. So Rex, you're going to be receiving, upon funding us, then you're going to receive $112,000 back for fiscal year 24. I'll send you that exact amount, but just wanted that to be on your radar and to be able to plan for how that happens. And the specific motion that was passed requires town of Smyrna's, when we get the last check, then we rebate. Same thing with Murfreesboro, Eagerboy, and the county.
But just to make it clear, we are not cutting fund into the library in any way.
What happens is we had, our total budget's only about $4 million a year for the Rutherford County Library System and our fund balance had grown to $2.5 million. And so $2.5 million is just kind of sitting there for emergencies or things that need to be happened. But honestly, if we need to replace a chiller or do any repair at the libraries, the towns fund that anyway. So it didn't make a lot of sense to just continue to set on $2.5 million of taxpayer dollars. So we've decided to reduce it by a million dollars to bring it back down to around the 30%, which is where we maintain ours or where we are obligated to maintain ours as well. And so that's where it's coming from. It's just coming out of that reserve that has kind of built up over the years.
A million for everybody, right? A million for, a million total for the entire system.
A million total for the county, right. 60% of that comes from, 60% of our funding comes from the county. And then the towns all have about 44% of their individual library system or library building. So Smyrna's portion is second largest to Murfreesboro, obviously.
Questions on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the budget amendment for fiscal year 2024. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move for approval.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second, any discussion?
So the additional amendments that were up here on the desk are not related to this?
It's incorporated into the ordinance.
It is incorporated into it. Okay.
Other questions? Okay, we've got a motion at a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 2425. Rex?
The ordinance and summarized budget for fiscal year 2425 are submitted for your consideration. I've attached the changes from first read to second read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the first reading. And this has gone through the budget retreat, two workshops, and one council meeting prior to this. We ask that you approve this.
Questions for Rex on upcoming budget? We've kind of had almost two days with it and then we've been through multiple meetings about it, so. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here in the public that'd like to speak for or against this upcoming year's budget? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I move we approve the budget for 2425 as is.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Rex, thanks to you and your team for all you did to get the budget done. We appreciate that. Item D, public hearing, consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on tax map 73, partials 16.01, 16.02, and 17.00.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is the plan of services that is for the annexation, which is the next item on your agenda. This does provide in detail the services that will be provided by the town upon the effective date of the annexation, which would be all services that the town currently provides except for water, which would be provided by Consolidated Utility District. Sewer will be provided via extension of the wastewater mains to the property by the property owners for the lift station that will be placed on the property of the church, which would be, and these properties would be serviced through the Stewarts Creek Forest Main once it is completed. The planning commission did review this, plan of services did recommend it to you. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on plan of services for the next item? Seeing none, then we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
There, real quick, if I may, this is my home church and I'm helping my home church through this process, so I'd prefer just to stay out of this vote, plan of service and the next item on the agenda.
Okay. Counsel?
I move we approve the plan of services.
A motion to approve plan of services, do I have a second? Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on tax map 73, partials 16.01, 16.02, and 17.00 requested by Kyle Griffin with CSDG on behalf of Delory D. and Teresa L. Silvas and First Baptist Church of Smyrna, Tennessee, containing 109.65 acres. The properties are located at 5100 Ammerville Road and 7441 Rocky Fork Ammerville Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is an annexation with a PRD zoning request as well as an R-1 zoning request tied to that. These properties are on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road as well as Ammerville Road, kind of in the intersection of those two streets are within the vicinity of these two properties as well. Land use plan will support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is the Bradley Downs and Linnwood PRD in town and RM in Rutherford County. The town, as I said, would be providing all services except for water, which would be provided by CD and they have issued a will serve letter regarding some off-site improvements that are necessary to meet fire flow requirements for this development. In addition to the requested property, staff did recommend the annexation of approximately 2,230 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fork Ammerville Road from the current town limits to the Ammerville Road intersection. This proposed PRD is for 27 villas slash duplexes, which are a total of 54 units. And originally 166 single-family lots, now showing 164 that we did receive from revised plans today. 164 single-family lots that would be age-restricted, as well as an additional 98 single-family lots, which would be non-age-restricted, for a total of 316 residences on the.
Go slot, 164 age-restricted and what was the other?
98 single-family lots that are not age-restricted.
Okay.
For a total of 316 residences total on 95.65 acres. The remaining 14 acres would be zoned R-1. And this is a location of Life Point Church Stewart Creek and they would remain on that property. Access would be from Rocky Fork Ammerville Road and the adjoining Bradley Downs Development for the age-restricted portion. And then from Ammerville Road, Drew Street to Dale Drive, and then the adjacent Bradley Downs and Linnwood Developments for the 98 non-age-restricted lots. Streets within the age-restricted area would be private with a gate at the entrance from Rocky Fork Ammerville Road. All the other streets would be public and all requirements of the town with regard to open space parking and setbacks would be met. The planning commission did recommend approval with three conditions. One, that a traffic study is required and any improvements recommended by that traffic study must be completed by the. study must be completed by the developer. Our standard comment regarding fire flow would be required to be met regarding a thousand gallons per minute, twenty PSI. And that this development will require submission for a floodplain development permit from the town, as well as reviewed by FEMA. There is a small area kind of on the north, northern portion of this property near Rocky Fork Ammival Road, where there is a creek that runs through that property. There's a floodplain now that they'll have to, for the bridge across that creek and those kind of things, they'll have to go through those, that process. Again, I did receive this afternoon about three o'clock, some revised plans that were submitted to try and address, there were some questions that came up at the workshop. And so, I kind of, I tried to review those. I haven't, honestly, I haven't, kind of getting them at three o'clock, I didn't review them completely, as thoroughly as I would have liked, but I did look at, look at them. The changes, which you all don't have, again, because we got this so late, but they did increase some of the architectural requirements for the age-restricted products as far as some additional brick and stone requirements. All of the fifty-five-foot wide age-restricted single-family lots did get increased, just fifty-foot wide lots, which is where they ended up reducing the count by two. So, there are a little bit wider lots. They did show a buffer, a ten-foot buffer between the single-family homes on the south side and the existing single-family home area. They did not, that, that does, did it, did show it stopping at Dale Drive and not going all the way to Ammival Road with it. There are some homes on the south side of that area as well. They did not, they did stop it at Dale Drive. And then, they did show, which is something that I had been told, but didn't have anything showing it, that the, the non-age-restricted portion of this would be, would be kind of combined with the Bradley Downs area, which it does connect to on the west side. And that would be a part of that HOA. And then, the amenities within Bradley Downs, it did show increasing those amenities to include a pool and a cabana. So, they've kind of increased the amenities within Bradley Downs to, as well as, for Bradley Downs as well as those ninety-eight lots that they're proposing here that are in the non-age-restricted portion of this. So, that's kind of highlights of what they have, the revised plans show, so.
So, if I'm on the last street, my HOA's going to be part of Bradley Downs? And I'm going to use the amenities that are in Bradley Downs?
Correct. And they do show an amenity area, as the gentleman who spoke under citizen comments mentioned, there is an amenity area shown kind of at the end of the, not at the end of the street, but because that street.
At the end of that, between the R-1?
Yes, between that R-1 area and that area of housing. They also did change one thing, it's not on my list there, they did, they kind of have some, the lots are kind of highlighted in pink and some were highlighted in blue. They didn't change the numbers, but they did change some of the locations. And all of the lots are back up to the existing single-family homes are now the larger, wider lots, instead of the, all they're all, as just shown on this drawing, all shown as the more narrow lots, so.
With a buffer going all the way down, right? Did you say there was a buffer going all the way to Ammival Road now?
No. It would go from Dale Drive to just past Woodland Trail there, where those existing homes are. It would be backing up to the.
Okay, I thought you said to Ammival Road, because there was some other homes down through there.
There are some other homes that are down through there. They're not showing a buffer there, that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you said.
There is an existing tree line, a fence row there, that's fairly well-established and with some large.
That will stay.
There's some large trees and that sort of thing. That would be my assumption that it would be staying, yes, at least on that portion that they're showing the ten-foot buffer.
Kevin, while you're here, just because Mr. Powell was, spoke and had some concerns, he talked about Dale Street being the only entrance and exit for this portion. Can you address that?
It would be, it certainly would be an entrance and exit. It would not be the only one. There would, it would be connected to Bradley Downs, and then it would connect through to the Linwood development as well. Both of those are not existents yet, but they would be, there would be connections there.
You said Linwood?
Yes.
So, where Linwood's showing a subdivision, I mean, a cul-de-sac now, that'll be a straight through?
That'll be a connection there, yes. And you would have the connection to the west and to Bradley Downs, which would be another way for the folks to get to Rocky Fork Ammival Road, or to go through, through Linwood as well as.
But it also comes out to Ammival where that blue line is, where it doesn't look like.
There would be, there would be a road extension, that, that existing road would extend eastward to Ammival Road as well, yeah. It didn't show up on that. That's something, again, that's, I think it's.
I know that's hard to see when you're looking at that.
Right. But there would be, that road would extend to Ammival Road as well as connecting to Dale Drive.
What about Edward Street?
Edward Street, there's not shown being connected.
Okay.
That would actually be kind of outside of the, this particular development, that would actually be on the church's property there.
He'd also talked about the amenities that are at the end on the bottom corner. Do we know what, yet, what that might be?
They had shown some, just some thoughts and ideas, kind of some, the dog park was part of the thing, and then kind of a walking trail area, kind of on the north side of that new street. The developers are here, they might could answer that a little bit better, but that's what they had shown. It's kind, I don't think they know exactly what would be there, that it would be some sort of an amenity, and those, somewhere in that realm of possibilities.
My understanding, that's like a second amenity area. That's not where the pool and stuff is, right?
No, the pool would be within the Bradley Downs development itself. And then, of course, there is a pool proposed in the age-restricted portion as well.
Right.
Um, could that buffer area come on down through that, to that?
I, that's what I would recommend, admitting that it goes down to the edge of this development. And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea just to kind of supplement the existing fence row all the way down over road there. Because you're going to have a road, you could add, just to add some little bit buffer from the traffic noise and that sort of thing.
Okay. Talk a little bit about flooding, that was one other thing.
I can't speak to what's going on with this development. That's not in Smyrna, it's something that the county would have had to have addressed if there is anything. All we can do is, the new development that would be proposed would have to keep their water on their property. They can't, if there is a water going there now, they can't make it any worse. I don't know if there is something on this property today that is keeping water, that needs to flow on through this property from, is causing some of this problem, that they would maybe, it could be accommodated, potentially you can accommodate some off-site water, you may have to do that. That certainly happens sometimes as well. I don't know the situation here, but they'll have to meet all of our requirements with regards to quality and quantity on the stormwater.
State law does not allow us to put any more water on, or that development to put any more water onto them. And if they are having issues, that might be something they want to talk to the county about in regards to that. Okay. Counsel, other questions?
Only question, I assume you're going to send us that new pattern book that they sent you, yeah, as soon as you can. I spoke, I spoke to the developer a little bit in that, right before we came in, and she was kind of explaining to me some of the updates. And I think the biggest thing that we need to recognize is, and we had a special call meeting to talk about things that we either wanted to see change or things maybe we weren't liking in the stuff that we had been getting presented. This developer and the design architect was there for that meeting. All of these updates that they've done were stuff that we specifically talked about in that meeting. So, although we didn't ask them to go back and redo things to make these things better, they took that upon themselves and did do that. So, I think that shows their willingness to work with the town, as well as the town to work with developers, to try to get a product that is as good as we can get, the best that we can get for the community and for the area. And I only, I just want to say that because I do appreciate you guys taking the time and the effort to take what we said and try to incorporate it. This particular development, honestly, density is always going to be an issue, I think. There's a few things that I still would have, like to have a different option here, but the policy, the process, the procedures, the standards that we have in place right now, this development meets all of those. And, and it wouldn't, it honestly wouldn't be fair for us to say you now have new standards that you didn't know about at this late in the game. And so, that's just my perspective. You know, we approved it last time, I think, by one vote. But I, I appreciate the developer working with us to try to make it as good as we can.
And I will also say that the developers, actually, I did see the new, the new layout and the changes that they've made. They actually called me, and I did meet to see that. And so, I did also thank them and appreciated that they were listening to what we said in the special call meeting, and that they have made changes to try to address some of the things that we talked about. And in our discussion, I still said to them that some, one of the concerns that I have is the density of the back part of this. And I understand that it is still going into Bradley Downs and Fitzmore with that, but I still had a concern with the density portion of this. And even in an effort to address some of that concern, they did rearrange the lots, and so, the fifty-five hundred lots are, are now on one side, where the forty-five hundred, they've switched them, so that they can try to accommodate some of the already, the residents that are there and how they are making, backing up to those residents as well. And so, I really, I do want to say also that I appreciate that you are listening and that you are doing, doing what you can to address the concerns that we have put forward. And I really appreciate you all doing that. I still, just me personally, have some concerns with the density that exists for this Bradley Downs portion that is being presented to us today.
Great. Other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward, state your name, your address, if you live in the town limits, and if you're representing someone.
Good evening, my name's Kyle Griffin with CSDG, address twenty-three oh five Plant Avenue, Nashville. I do not live in the town limits. I am the engineer of record for the developer. I just, I hope you all heard that we've been listening, we've really been trying. We've made many concessions that we could under the current circumstances. I did want to touch on a couple of points. You know, the amenities on the southeast side of the site, that was brought up. We'd be happy to push those a little bit further away from the neighborhood, push them more into the core and put detention at that space. You see all the blue on the site, there's the two blue spaces and even some green spaces off next to the R-1. Those are all detention facilities. Our intent, and we've known about water problems in the area from, from talking with the church, that there are problems there. Our intent is to capture a lot of that water that was originally going to those neighbors' homes and redirect, direct it straight into the creek that is on our site. So, they should, by approving this and installing the detention facilities, they should see a drastic reduction in the flows coming onto their site. I also want to talk, talk briefly about the buffers. We are happy to extend that buffer all the way to Ammival, and we are planning on building that road all the way to Ammival. That was the, the gist of, of my comments on this. I'd be happy to answer any other, any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Would you, would you be willing, after the meeting, to get with Mr. Powell and his wife, just to talk a little bit about the water and all that, so they can have, so y'all can have some conversation, just so?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Civils. I own the property at seven-four-four-one Rocky Fork Ammival Road, and I am in favor of the annexation. And I have been working closely with the development company. I'll have to tell you, my experience has been nothing but perfect. They have, everything they've told me has come to pass. So, my, I just want you to know that I feel like they, they also have a feeling for the community. It's not just about more homes, which I'm still in favor of. I would love for everybody to experience what my husband and I have experienced in this community for the last seventeen years. But we're in a position to move to another location, and I think it's time that other people enjoy the property that we've had for so long. And I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? If you'll come forward, state your name, address, and if you live inside the city limits.
Thank you, Mayor, Daniel Eppright, one-one-four Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee, inside the city limits. There's been a couple of words that have been used in this meeting and in the previous public comment thing, and that would be density, and then also age-restricted. Now, I imagine we have some other age-restricted properties in Smyrna, and I'm wondering if there's a way to get some sort of assessment of how much less of a burden on services you might have with age-restricted. I would think that age-restricted people are not going to be, you know, shooting off fireworks and small arms at two o'clock in the morning, because they're a little older, they're, you're not going to have children running around terrorizing folks, because there's not going to be any kids. I don't know if there'd be fewer cars. I don't know if there'd be fewer police calls. I think there probably would be more ambulance calls. But based on your experiences with the other age-restricted areas here, how much less of a burden would age-restricted housing be? And that's it. It's rhetorical if you can't answer now.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me say a couple of things. So, first. First thing, small arms in city limits are never allowed, no matter what, no matter what age you are. Thanks, Dan. So, a couple of things that I can point out, and we've talked about this, we've talked about it recently, but, you know, age-restricted community, fifty-five and over, generally does have less children, so less drain on the schools. Usually, if they don't have kids at home driving, then there's less vehicles. A lot of cars these, a lot of houses these days have four or six vehicles, because they have teenagers at home. The older community potentially, potentially should have less of that, so helps reduce. If you built the same complex without the fifty-five restriction, you would definitely have more children, more cars, possibly more police calls, you know, that just depends. You could have some really rowdy fifty-five-year-olds, I guess, and still have just as many police calls. But this is, I, I think your point is, is accurate. Fifty-five and over does reduce the impact somewhat of a similar community that didn't have that age restriction. Obviously, new development adds impact, but this is less than it could be.
But even as we're doing that, as far as the, the fifty-five and plus, fifty-five plus development, that's a hundred and sixty-six lots and twenty-seven villas. But right behind it are ninety-eight un-restricted lots that are basically condensed into that amount of space still. So, yes, they may not have fireworks and whatnot in the gated part, but we got ninety-eight other residents right behind here, and I understand that it will be part of the other development. But where it sits, it still can have those issues.
Okay. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Do we, just real quick, do we need to include?
To include the ten-foot buffer to Ammival Road. I'd like to have that moved. Yep, that's, so moved.
Okay. And I'll second with that.
A motion and a second? Okay, I don't disagree with you, but I also, Steve, agree with you in regards to, I think, after the meeting, they did what they could with the development they had. And I am, in moving forward with ones that aren't this far along, I'm absolutely going to be wanting to hold people's feet to the fire in regards to that. And I understand where you're coming from too with this one, though. But I do feel like this one met the requirements that, that we currently have, so. Any other discussion?
Yeah, only thing I'll say is, I mean, honestly, if this was six months later, I might have a completely different vote, but because they're just so far along in the process and it already submitted, it just, to me, it doesn't feel fair to apply standards we haven't even adopted yet to an existing development that's already in the process. That's just kind of where I'm at. I agree with everything you're saying, and I feel the same way, but.
Please let me say that I'm not trying to adopt a standard. I voted no the last time.
Oh, no.
No, absolutely.
No, I just want everybody in the audience to recognize, I'm not trying to. No, I just want everybody in the audience to recognize, I'm not trying to pre-limit any of what we've talked about in our discussions. I already had these concerns prior to us even having that meeting. So I'm pretty much staying in line with what my opinion was before.
Yeah, my comments weren't directed personally.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure-
Just want to make sure everybody understood where we're at.
Okay, other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Do you need a roll call?
No, I've got it.
Okay, can you tell me what the-
Yes, four yeses, two nos, one abstention.
Okay, so item passes. We'll move on to item F, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 24-15 relative to the annexation and rezoning of certain property on tax map 73, parcel 16.01, 16.02, and 17. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business, which our first item is Planning Commission Report. Item one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map 33, parcel 73.03, to go from R3 with ESO to PRD with ESO, and it's requested by Janet Ibrahim Nasif. And the property requested to be rezoned contains 2.13 acres and is located on Rocky Fork Road.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request on Rocky Fork Road. It's about 900 feet from the intersection with Enin Springs Road West. This is our 24 gateway character area, and this was our land use plan with support here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PUD, which is the addition to Villages of Valley Green PUD. This proposed PRD is for five duplexes or 10 units, about 4.69 units per acre. One access point is shown to Rocky Fork Road. This application is incomplete with regard to architectural elevations and landscape plans, open space plans, and utility plans. So staff did recommend the project be deferred or denied at the Planning Commission due to the incompleteness of the application. Planning Commission did recommend denial unanimously. Staff would also recommend denial at this time.
Counsel, questions or comments on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the denial?
Approve the denial, the motion to deny this request?
To deny the request.
Second. Motion to deny, and we have a second to deny. Any discussion? All in favor of denial say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and C2 zoning of property located on tax map 55C, Group B, parcel 35.00, requested by Hardik Patel on behalf of, Kevin?
I would assume Shriya Inc.
Shriya Inc., very good, containing 86 one-hundredths of an acre.
Yeah, this is an annexation request on Ammerville Road. It's about 400 feet east of the intersection with One Mile Lane. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is C2 in town and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services except for water in this area. In addition to the requested property, staff did recommend the annexation of approximately 233 linear feet of the existing right-of-way extension. It actually extends from Ammerville Road, does border this property on the north, does provide access to it from Ammerville Road. This right-of-way was dedicated to the state with the recording of the plat, which is this Plink Creek, Section 4, in March of 1998. Rutherford County has not maintained that and does not maintain it as a county road. It would not meet town standards as a public road, so any development of this property would require an upgrade to this right-of-way to town standards to facilitate access to a commercial property. This property does lie entirely within the 100-year floodplain, so development would require, be required to submit to all required studies and fully comply with Article 9 of the zoning ordinance and all FEMA requirements. Sewer is not currently available, so they would have to extend that from the nearest property, or near sewers at the rear of the vacant property that is addressed at 1996 Ammerville Road. So they would be required to obtain those easements and reset location.
Where is the sewer again?
There's a vacant tract, I think it's addressed at 1996. I think it's to the north, across Ammerville Road. They're going to have to obtain easements and come across Ammerville Road to get sewer to it. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously. Staff would also recommend approval.
Looks like a challenging piece of law, piece of property to develop.
It will be a very challenging.
We have any idea what the thought process is for the C2 zoning?
I don't know. They didn't indicate exactly what they were looking to do. They just requested C2. The surrounding zoning in town is C2, and so it was, it really is. That, it is, the property as it sits today, it is approved as a residential lot in a subdivision. Obviously, it was never built on. There is a house next to the west that is a house, but it is also has some sort of commercial business in it as well, both. And then the other parcel just west of that is the county ambulance service has a building there, so it is, and you do have residential to the rear there, but majority of the property, at least along Ammerville Road, there is kind of semi-commercial, not completely commercial.
Kevin, is the person next to it that has come to us before and-
I don't believe that one has come to us. Now, the property-
That was in front.
It was in front, right in the curve.
It was the parcel, kind of, as you go around the curve on the right-hand side there.
Okay. But it was deep in the floodplain.
Yeah, and they did ask, I think they asked for an industrial zoning there. It is in the city already with a commercial zoning, but they did ask for an industrial zoning, that's been a couple of years ago now.
So the road, the right-of-way that you said is not being maintained, is that the hashed marked area, or is that the road coming from Ammerville Road?
That's the hashed area there.
So their access to their property is only that piece there?
Yeah.
They have actually no access to Ammerville Road from this lot?
Yeah. Well, and again, it was kind of an odd thing. The county required that dedication of that right-of-way when that plat was approved and recorded back in 1998. And so, I don't know if TDOT's ever done anything with it, if they even know they own it.
Huh.
But it was dedicated at that time.
So they would have to come off of whatever that road is?
Yeah, there's not, it doesn't have a name, it's just, there is a drive that comes off of Ammerville Road there that provides access to the house directly to the west. This track, there's a vacant tract also to do directly east of this, and then there is that, kind of that triangular shaped piece in the curve there as well. It's, I don't know exactly what's back there.
So could they, with that cut on Ammerville Road, could they work out a deal to expand that cut and come across that T-dot right-of-way to their property?
Yeah, and they would have, they would have, that's how they're ax, or could access it today. It's a vacant tract, there is like a garage, property to the west-
Yeah.
-used to own this tract as well, and I think they had that garage built at some point, but now they've sold it to these folks.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be honest-
Are you talking about coming from Ammerville right there in the big curve?
Yeah.
But look, is that not their driveway, is that not those people's driveway that comes all the way out?
It is.
It provides access to the existing house as well as this track, the track to the east, and that triangular piece there. All access is that drive.
So it's a shared driveway, or is it owned by one of, one of the house owners?
I don't know who's been maintaining it this time. It's actually, like I said, it's a little, kind of a little extension of right-of-way from the state right-of-way.
So it's entirely in that section that's marked by the black line? Is that right-of-way? That's not, no one owns that, right?
That is all entirely T-dot right-of-way, yeah.
Right.
That area is entirely T-dot right-of-way.
So what worries me about that is with C2 zoning, which is our most open zoning, what could they do there?
I mean, it could be pretty much anything you can think of commercially, except for any type of automotive sales or repair.
And I mean, would we want, would you want a convenience store or a gas station or something to go in there? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, we talked about that a little bit, the use, it's a C2 zone, and surrounding there is all pretty much C2, except for the industrial across the road and behind it. Zoning-wise, it kind of made a fit, and I think that's where the Planning Commission decided to come down on the way that they did. But we asked the same question, we didn't know the usage at this point.
Yeah, we don't know what the usage is.
And honestly, I agree with you completely. Normally, we make sure it looks and it's zoned. Is there, honestly, it's the access to Ammerville right in that curve that makes me nervous, right? We, I think we previously denied the property up because of the proximity to One Mile Lane and that intersection, and then another cut possibly. Could, could we put a stipulation on this that they-
That's an approved T-dot cut, I see.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they can't, they can't really restrict that, can you?
I'm assuming there is a, the T-dot approved, have they have a permit for that at some point? Because that driveway, that, the, that existing house is using it. Like I said, that other property, that triangular piece of property does use it today. So I'm, I assume they got a permit for it. I don't know that for sure.
It's left over from Ammerville Road and One Mile Lane intersected right there.
Right.
And it made a sharp turn right there.
Yeah, the road, that, I guess that's the old One Mile Lane, right?
It might be.
Yeah, I think it is.
You said it is.
The monkey woman, she just ran over there.
It's right there, it's right there. So I believe that's the old One Mile Lane.
Cemetery delineated in there, too.
Yeah, there is a cemetery, not on this track, but there is, in that area.
The home directly next to it is, is that the property owner as well, is that a different owner?
They did own this property, that's, they have sold. That is the owner who sold it to these-
So they're the ones that sold?
Yeah.
Because obviously, don't need to worry about proximity to that house if they're the ones that sold the property for commercial use.
Kevin, what's the possibility of putting a septic tank in there?
I have, well, no way of knowing. Floodplain areas usually are, do have better dirt, so they may be fine.
It's just going after that sewer-
But can you do that with commercial?
Not cost-effective at all.
Yeah, you can do it. I mean, you have to, especially if you're going to be in type of food preparation and all, it's a lot, it's a lot tougher.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If it's a commercial use-
You have grease traps and all kinds of stuff if you're going to do that.
But if it's just a commercial use, it doesn't have a heavy sewer need, you know, an office building or something, then it wouldn't be a problem, for sure.
What's the adjacent property? So the one to the, the right of it?
The one to the, to the west of it is, there's a house there that also has like an in-home business of some kind, I think.
Okay.
But to the east, to the east is just a vacant tract.
It is vacant, okay. Is it also residential?
Everything over there is zoned residential in the county currently.
Okay.
So where does that road even lead to? I mean, if they don't get access through to Ammerville, does that little road just disappear?
It just kind of dies, dies at the end, it kind of-
It used to go to a little bridge, didn't it?
Yeah, there's kind of a, it's actually kind of fenced right there, because when I, the signs up, I saw, it's kind of fenced at the end of it there, kind of eastern end, where it kind of becomes private property. It may have been a road at one point, but it actually becomes private property at that point.
That's crazy.
So without them having ingress and egress, I mean, can we do that?
I mean, I believe they have ingress and egress through that, through that drive already.
It'd be a condition of site plan approval anyway, wouldn't it?
I mean, we would just say it's not adequate to serve a commercial business.
Right.
You know, it would be okay if they were building a house there.
Right.
Just like what's already over there. That was our concern, was it's not adequate to be a commercial access, true commercial building of whatever that ends up being.
And the person still wanted to do it, as far as you know?
As far as I know, I haven't heard from them, in any other way, yeah. I mean, they received all of our, all that information was given, that I put in this, in your summary, was in their, was in their comments to them, so.
So you have conveyed to them that, based on your review of it, it's not a commercially accessible lot, and they still want approval of it?
The commercial-
Or to bring it to us?
The commercial portion of this, the sewer issue, the floodplain issue, we're all, I made them aware of all those things, yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
So even if we approve this, there's still mega hurdles for them to overcome?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments or questions?
Are you comfortable if, because my mind is saying, well, why don't they give us something, if they're, if they're looking to do a certain thing, encourage them to do that so that we can, you can see, you as staff can see if it's even something workable?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. We knew more about what they were wanting to do there, maybe we'd feel more comfortable with the road access piece of this, certainly. The floodplain and the sewer issue is going to be there no matter what, I think. We count, at Planning Commission, some of the discussion kind of centered around, would we rather have this in Smyrna so we can have a little bit more control over it versus them going to the county requesting rezoning, and we wouldn't have-
Any.
Design review guidelines are, would not apply all those kind of things.
Okay.
But even in, even in a floodplain or floodzone, you can build up.
Yeah, they would have to, there's going to have to be a full study done on, because they can't affect anybody upstream or downstream. If they can just bring in fill, they have to, they're going to have to create more, whatever storage capacity they take away by bringing in and fill, they got to add back to the balance.
Exactly, and I think we did that to a convenience market that was around the corner there.
Yeah, the convenience store at the corner of One Mile, which at that time, the floodplain boundary has changed, and they're not as affected now as they were at the time, but yes, that is, that can be done. This one's a little bit more extreme, as far as, I think, if you look at the ground and the depth, I think it's maybe a little bit worse. There's more to build up, I think, than that.
But from a, from a straight zoning perspective, if we're looking at an area that's developing commercially, does it make sense to go ahead and rezone it and then work through site plans and regs and ordinances as far as it getting to approve, to an approved state versus just leaving it as residential?
Right, and that's, I think that's what, I guess where I come down on it is, if it's going to be a commercial piece of property, I would rather it meet our design guidelines, landscaping requirements and things. We have more restrictions. County has the same floodplain rules we do, so as far as that goes, it wouldn't really matter, but from our-
Our buffers, our buffers would come into play as far as what we would require for any abutment to any residential, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, and with that residential literally sitting right beside it, I mean, that house looks like it's almost on the property line.
Yeah, they would have, all three sides would be a pretty significant buffer.
Other questions or comments?
Kevin, the west side, that, I think you probably said it, that is commercial, is that correct?
No, it's a house, but they do have an in-home business of some kind. I don't know, I know exactly what it is, but they've got a signage up and everything as a, they have a business there as well as the house.
And that's EMS on the corner next to it? At the old EMS building?
On the corner, yes, that's a EMS building, yes.
So basically, they're just asking for us to make it commercial, and they're still going to have to meet all the things that we've been talking about here tonight.
Yes.
We're just, our decision whether we want to make it consistent with what's on the ride.
As well as annex in it.
Annexing and zoning it commercial with the annexation.
Other questions or comments?
I guess my last one is, I'm nervous about it, but my nervousness is eased, eased if we annex it and put it under our control, because now we have some control. If we don't approve it, then it's still out in the county and a lot of different things could possibly happen, so. Does the county have any restrictions? I'm going to follow up with Steve, I'm sorry. Can you have any restrictions about commercial property that can be zoned for a car lot? Do they have a C5 for automotive, some of the automotive?
I honestly don't, I'm not familiar enough with their zoning. I don't know if they have a separate, I'm sure they have such zoning similar to what we have, but I don't know if they have a separate zoning, like, if it's set up exactly like what we have. I'm sure they probably do.
The way we're growing here, I'm more comfortable taking it in, rezoning it, and then working through the site plan process to make sure this works, and I am leaving it to the county where I don't feel as restrictive. And the other thing, when we go to a C2 zone, we don't typically, I mean, sometimes we'll ask, right, what do you have planned? Sometimes we don't ask or we don't know, but we know what's allowed in a C2, and we know what our rules and regs and ordinances are, are in relation to a C2. So from that perspective, I'm comfortable as well. Yeah, I agree with all of that. I think my biggest concern or worry was it's C2 right up next to residential, and there's not a big enough piece of property there to do much buffering. But the reality is that probably all the lots around it are going to end up commercial anyway. And so if we don't annex this, now we have four or five lots there that could be acquired
And so if we don't annex this, now we have four or five lots there that could be acquired and be anything. If we do annex this, it's kind of a wrench in the, in the middle there, right? They have to deal with, because now you're in city limits. And the rest of the properties around it most likely will go city limits at that point.
I'm comfortable with it as long as Planning Commission and staff know what our concerns are and are willing to make sure moving forward that those are addressed. We don't end up with something that, um, doesn't need to be there.
Same questions were asked.
Absolutely.
For the same reason, you know, if there is concern, I understand being nervous about it, but to Tim's point, there'd have to be a site plan and it has to meet all those guidelines and there, there, there's a lot of hurdles here.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised really, truly if they were able to come in and do much with it right now, but they might work all those out. Then at C two, we get to see what it is and how it lays out and all of our design review.
Well, as long as that, during that site plan process, y'all are on it, we're good. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map fifty-four, parcel fifty point oh one, to go from R three to PRD. It's requested by Kyle Griffin on behalf of S Collins Two Properties LLC. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately three point five three acres and is located at eighty-two eighty-six Rocky Fork Amville Road. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's on Rocky Fork Amville Road. It's about six hundred feet south of the intersection with Morton Lane. Uh, landage plan would support medium density, single family development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R three, uh, Stewart's Glen and Cedar Hills PRD, and the PUD, which is the Lady Commons, uh, PUD there at the corner uh, with Morton Lane. Uh, this proposed PRD is for seven single family lots, uh, for a density of one point nine eight houses per acre. Houses would range from twenty-four hundred to thirty-six hundred square feet in size, would be a mix of brickstone and concrete siding, with a minimum of seventy-five percent of all elevations being brick or stone, uh, for those, uh, basically there's six new houses here. There's, it, the existing house that's on the property would remain on a, one of the lots. Uh, all requirements of the town with regard to open space setbacks and parking would be met. There is one access point shown through the adjoining Stewart's Glen development via extension of a private road. Uh, this does, this area does allow the, uh, COD service here for water, and a will serve letter has been issued for that development. They've indicated they can meet fire flow requirements. Uh, the Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval. There was one condition added at the Planning Commission, them to show a buffer between, uh, the proposed lots four, five, and six, uh, and the adjoining property to the west. I did receive revised plans today, um, that does show that, kind of that buffer area. Uh, there would be basically evergreen trees every twenty feet and then a kind of a three rail, kind of a wooden fence, kind of between those trees and the kind of the house area, kind of setting that apart a little bit, and that the HOA would be maintaining that area. Um, and they also did submit some revised elevations that kind of match up better with what they, they had committed verbally and in, in writing on there about the seventy-five percent brick or stone on all the elevations. Um, but the elevations, the revised elevations do show that, um, and do reflect that better. So obviously, I, I got that today. It's another one that I was thinking to you, um, if you approve this tonight, certainly you would have a four second reading, so.
Does approval become a community pool?
I don't, that's not indicated that, no.
You what?
That's, that's not, it's, it's not been indicated that that would be a community pool, no.
I guess if you could jump the gate. So I'm gonna be honest, you know, we, we don't see a lot of these, uh, half acre lots, basically, you know, two per acre, um. We don't, uh, you look at this and look at what's going around it and think about what it could be versus what we're getting. That's, that's, that's kinda how I looked at this. Twenty-four hundred, thirty-six hundred square foot homes are not small. We talked about last, in our special call meeting, we talked about with Maple Farms, that we wanted this buffering, we wanted this stair step design where, you know, we're not having R one right up against, you know, dense PRDs. Well, this is providing that exact buffer um, between Stewart's Glen and these R one residents. I, I don't know what else we could really expect.
So, uh, go ahead.
When I, when I saw it, I'm kinda like you, Steve, I got pretty excited because we, we're always talking about density, density, and I looked at this, oh my goodness, one point nine houses, and, um, that's some of the things we've been talking about, and, and I'm, I'm glad that, uh, again, that, that they're listening and the size homes that they're putting here, and then the mixture of seventy-five percent brick and stone, so I'm, I was, we just don't see a lot of those, and, um, I'm, I'm glad that, that they're looking and listening.
I, I would like to see more.
Absolutely.
So, on the side of the road to the south, is that a tree line? Or I see that there's a detention pond on the bottom half there, and in the other corner, the dark dog park. Between those two, is that green space or anything, or is it all cut down?
It basically would be on the, the side, that would basically be, it would be open space all owned by the HOA. Uh, on that side of the road. The other side is basically there's, that's five of the lots.
Right, I see that on that side. I meant on the south of the road there.
It would be all open space owned by the HOA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are any, are any of the trees gonna remain there? Do you know?
I don't.
Did I miss the picture?
I don't know.
Trying to find all of it all.
I don't recall exactly. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Looking at the.
Just curious.
The one Google picture that's in there, there's not a lot of trees there anyway.
There's not, yeah, there's, it's not a heavily wooded area or anything, but.
Okay.
There may be a few trees there. It's not a very wide area, but there might be an opportunity there for, if there is a tree.
So, um, Ms. Decker was here and had a couple of questions, so one of the questions or concerns was privacy. It really looks like only the, the three and four, what we're looking at shows three and four, but is there buffer that's gonna be there on that side?
Yeah, it's, it's basically lots four, five, and six are the ones that actually would border her property directly. It's those three lots. It's just how they're numbered, four, five, and six. That's where they did show that buffer area in the revised drawings that I received today. It's a ten foot wide buffer strip there between, kinda on the back of those lots, so.
She also mentioned that there was a, the grading level was different though, so would the buffer even affect?
Yeah, and again, I would have.
Actually provide some privacy or no?
I would have to go back and check. I can't recall exactly what the grading right there is. It, we kinda have a, like a preliminary grading plan right now. The full grading, that usually comes, become when the subdivision plan's done. Uh, so I would have to go back and verify and look at that again. I honestly don't know exactly what the elevation of the ground is there versus what it is today and how that's gonna affect. I'm not discounting what she said, because she lives there, I don't, but I don't, I, I don't have that information in front of me to answer that clearly.
So if the grading is off, what is it that we can request to help her continue to have her privacy?
I mean, you can certainly.
Anything can we do?
In, yeah, increase the buffering, you know, having more mature trees from the beginning, you know, that sort of thing versus typically that for the initial trees, it takes a little bit of time for them to grow, you know, something like that. Uh, you know, a fence, she even mentioned a, a fence is not really gonna help her, uh, like a solid privacy type fence or something like that, so.
Is that the area of buffering that you said they increased in the packet they sent you?
Yeah, the pot lots four, five, and six, those three proposed lots there, would, it would be in the, the rear of those lots, which would be ones that would be backing up to the back of her house.
And she also talked about construction vehicles, but I don't see any reason why construction vehicles would be on her property at all.
And, yeah, I don't, that's, I can't speak to that, really. That's, if, if, if that, the developer of the Stewart's Glen development, that's, if they had done something that they shouldn't have done there, then that's something that you would address with them, but.
Right, but no, but there should be no reason.
Should not have been on her property at all, no. It should not have happened.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
We talked about the flooding. I mean, we've had that come up a couple of times on, with people's neighbors concerned. And so there will be a detention, well, it's on the back side, so.
Yeah, they're showing two different detention ponds, kinda on either end of this development. They're showing, that's the detention, so they would have to abide by the same rules any development would. And our, Mr. Rose and his department, I know they go through and regularly kind of check those and make sure that they are being maintained, so the ones that are across the street not being maintained or whatever. I, he, he was here tonight, he heard that, so, um.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I will move we approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, other discussion?
I do have a question again, because I realized that Mr. Griffin is in the audience, the engineer who, who's working on it. Is it possible that you can speak with the neighbor to address any concerns she may have and see if, if it's something that can be worked out or if it will affect her property at all?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
There, I don't have a conflict here at all, but I know these people selling this or developing this, and I've, I've worked with them in the past, so I'm just gonna stay neutral on this one. This one I haven't commented, but I do not have a conflict on it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map thirty-four I, Group B. Is that L I or L?
It's thirty-four I.
Okay, thirty-four I, Group B, parcel six point zero zero, to go from R two to P and O dash two, owned and requested by Eduardo Moreno. The property requested to be rezoned contains thirty-two one hundredths of an acre and is located at one-one-five-one-four Old Nashville Highway.
Yeah, this is, uh, is on Old Nashville Highway. It's about, uh, three hundred feet from the intersection with Davis Park Drive. Uh, landage plan would support medium density, single family in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R two and then C two on the opposite side of the road there across the street. Uh, there is an existing house on this property. Uh, the intended use is for the existing house to be used as an office. And so the P and O two is professional office, uh, that's a fair, pretty limited zoning, just pretty much just offices and and there's a couple uses allowed as special exceptions such as a daycare, but it's pretty limited in, in the uses that are, would be allowed. Um, if this rezoning is approved, a site plan would be required, joining all, meeting all of our requirements and, and converting that existing single family residence to a commercial use would require them going through the COGS Department and meeting all those applicable COGS. Uh, the Planning Commission did review this. They did, uh, did recommend denial, five-four-one against, um, so staff would also recommend denial at this time.
Questions for Kevin or Mark? On this?
I didn't hear exactly what all the, uh, discussion was at the Planning Commission, I watched part of it, but, uh, because I understood that y'all were interested in, like, if, if three or four of those guys come in and ask for theirs to be zoned to commercial, it's.
Yeah, the sense, it almost felt like a spot zone a little bit.
Right.
Um, you know, we had this come up, uh, across from the Yon the Hut some years ago. They all wanted to go P and O or commercial along in that area, and then we had it, I brought up the example across from Walmart, all that has and stays that way on Enid Springs there. But even though they're on a five lane highway, a lot of that could eventually turn into some sort of private business or insurance office, something that fits a P and O.
We had one fella who did this years and years ago, and, uh, he just started parking cars out in his.
Yeah.
In his yard, and, uh, uh, there was nothing we could do about it, because it was owned commercial in a residential area, and he had cars parked all in the yard.
I think if the neighbors got together and came in here and said, this feels more like something we all wanna be a part of, it might have, might have made a difference, I think, but
I agree.
Having one come in, single shot, it just kinda concerns me a little bit.
Other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to deny the request.
A motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, to deny, any other discussion? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map thirty-three, parcel eighty-seven point zero zero, to go from R one with ESO to PRD with ESO. It's requested by Rob Mulchen on behalf of Odessa Louise Settles. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately six point seven eight acres and is located on Gamble Lane. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a property, is on Gamble Lane. It's about a thousand feet away from the intersection with Enid Springs Road West. Uh, this also falls in our twenty-four gateway, uh, area, character area for a land use plan. Uh, the surrounding zoning is a mix of R one and R three. Uh, this proposed PRD is for twenty-two single family lots, which is about three point two four houses per acre. Uh, houses would range from seventeen hundred to twenty-six hundred square feet, would be a mix of brickstone and concrete siding. Uh, this does meet all our requirements on open space, parking, and setbacks. Uh, one access point is shown from Gamble Lane. That would be a new collector road, as shown on the major thoroughfare plan, and it would be shown to, uh, which would go to its, that map has changed, because it would actually go all the way to the southern property line, that entry road would. It is, uh, would, that road would eventually connect Gamble Lane to Seven Oaks Boulevard, uh, to provide additional avenues for future traffic flow in this area as it continues to grow and develop. Uh, the discussion at, at the Planning Commission did include a potential fence to be added to that western side of lots five and six, which would be kinda, there's a house on that western property line, or western property there. Uh, the developer's representative did commit to that at the meeting, and since that meeting, I did receive revised plans, uh, that did show that six foot vinyl privacy fence along that property line. So, again, we will get those to you prior to second reading if you do approve this tonight. Uh, that was really the only change, other than that roadway change, which, that was shown actually at the Planning Commission as well. Uh, the Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval. Uh, staff would also recommend approval.
Anything, 'cause I know you were out with your knee, but Mark, anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, not really. I think it sort of speaks for itself. The seventeen hundred minimum was a good product, in our opinion, but the, uh, previously, and Tim will probably recall this, uh, this was initially submitted in for a townhome development. And, uh, they heard us when we spoke about that and came back and brought us something the Planning Commission, as a group, felt better about. Of course, staff recommended it, so that's why we live with it.
Yeah, I think this is a good example of how the process is supposed to work, right? We see something, it comes in, we're not, we don't like it, we have some issues with it, work with the developers and come up with something that's softer and work, fits the community better.
Other questions or comments?
Across the street, that's, is that the R one?
It's R three.
R three.
R one is to the south and to the, uh, west there.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
And, and, um, the density is, is pretty high, obviously. But it's probably the best fit right in here for what, uh, what they've got. I don't, I don't particularly like the three point, whatever it is, houses per acre. But it, uh, probably fits what's already there.
The developed portion it does, yeah, because you've got, it's R three across the street and to the east as well, so it's roughly that same density. Maybe a little bit, a little bit higher, but.
Roughly three, three acres, or three homes per acre across the street, three point two, four acres here, correct?
It's, it's, it's close.
Yeah.
Is Oak Haven of the same density?
Yeah, it's R three as well.
So I have a question about the, the, let's say, lot fourteen, the way that it's laid out, so it's um, up against the Oak Haven residence over there. Is there a buffer line along?
There's not, being single family to single family, there's, there's not one required typically. Uh, there is, we talked about a fence on that end as well, since the property to the west is where the, that's where lots five and six are. Because it was going into the side of that house there. There is an existing fence already there. You know, right at the end of that street, and so that's why it wasn't required on that end. But there would not be a buffer or anything like that on that side.
So Kevin, one of the, the plan book that we have, or at least I'm looking at, shows that street going straight through lot nine and ten.
That's correct.
It only showed twenty-two lots, and now it's twenty-four.
That's correct, yeah. That's correct. Yeah, that's, this map was created before that got changed.
So that, we don't expect there to be a connector there, need a connector there?
No, on the south side, that road, that would be there. That's the collector-level street that they were required to.
So your map is not correct?
This map is, yes. What's on there?
I was confused when she said fourteen, so on my map, on this map, it's twelve. Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm turning it off.
I was confused. I was like, what's row is fourteen? It's in the middle.
And it looks like twelve, and those other houses are very similar in regards to lot size.
Yeah, they are.
Well, this especially, so.
Well, to Kevin's point, I know the question came up about a buffer, but this is residential to residential.
Right.
So it's.
I get that, and I was just, the fact that the way it sits, there's, there's not any privacy for that new, well, the old Oak Haven estate property now. It won't be when the new, when this subdivision gets built, so.
But even if it were brought in as an R three, there still wouldn't be a buffer requirement. I feel like we're kind of getting into this area where we want to wall everything off.
I don't want to wall, but I do want the ones that are there, if they already have privacy, I want to respect that they do.
So if, if you're in a home and someone buys the land behind you, your privacy is gone then, and you want to wall?
No, if they, but if they cut down all the trees, then yes, it would be.
Is there any rules or regs as far as tree canopies, requirements and subdivisions?
None in subdivisions, no.
Okay.
I mean, we do require buffering, like, multifamily, single-family, et cetera like that.
Single-family, it's a commercial, a commercial, single-family.
It makes a lot of sense when you're talking about density changes or development style changes. I mean, this is basically the same thing backing up to it, and they built in a subdivision, the original, the existing owners built in a subdivision, so they expected, they expected to have neighbors, right? We're talking about one house, number twelve.
Okay.
So I, I think they did a good job of putting the detention, I mean, detention ponds kind of have to go where they have to go, but the green space is right up against that, the other houses, so there's only one house that even potentially is impacted. And half of that one is a street, not a house, so impact's pretty small, I think.
Other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six is consideration of an ordinance amending the text to the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Three, General Provisions, and Article Seven, Administration and Enforcement. Kevin?
These are text amendments that staff brought to the planning commission for consideration. Two sep, two separate sections of the ordinance. The amendment to section three point one two oh would change the seminal deadline for site plans from seventeen days prior to the planning commission meeting to twenty-four days prior, and the amendment to section seven point zero nine zero would make the zoning ordinance consistent with the recently passed state law regarding legal notice advertisements in a newspaper for rezoning requests. The first one is really just to give staff an extra week to review the plans that are coming to us. We did kind of compare ourselves a little bit to what goes on around us, and most everyone is quite a bit more than two and a half weeks. Most are four, some are even six, or more, even more than that. And so, we wanted just to give ourselves an extra week to review the plans that had come before us. Our process wouldn't change, it would just add that additional week. This would also provide additional staff, time for staff to be able to provide more public notice for any zoning or annexation requests, be a placement of signs on the requested properties and sending letters, which we're required to do for annexations now, twenty-one days prior, or beginning July first, we're required to do that twenty-one days prior to the public hearing, but we're gonna go ahead and do the letters. We're not gonna put the larger signs up till twenty-one days before, because those are expensive and, and sometimes things don't even make it past first reading, so, so we'll still wait on that, but as far as the smaller signs and the letters, we wanted to go ahead and start that, just to provide more opportunity for citizens to express their concerns if they have any. So, and this just give us an extra week to, in order to really accomplish that, because it's tough with their current setup. The, also just, we did have a parallel amendment to the sub-rject, do the same thing for the subdivision plans, so. Planning commission would hear that at their next meeting. Amendment to Article Seven would change the requirement, again, just to be consistent with the new state law regarding changing from fifteen days to twenty-one days, our ordinance just called out to fifteen days, and so that's, would just make our ordinance compliant with the new state law in that regard. So, planning commission did review these, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Kevin, I heard you say that the majority of those around us give themselves a longer amount of time to review. I know you all, with the growth we're seeing here in our area, do you feel like this is enough time?
I think this is gonna feel like a lot of time for us, because it's, you just said extra week. I think, you know, I think, I would like to at least do this. I would think our timing works really well, as far as when the meeting is, when council then meets, or anything that's come to you all, and so I feel like this will, I think this will take care of a lot of our issues with regards to just giving us that extra time to get staff reports out. Also, we'll help the applicants. It's gonna give them more time to respond. When we send comments out that first time, often it's on a Thursday, and we ask for revised plans the following week on a Tuesday, so it'll help them as well, give them a little bit more time to revise.
Kevin, I know we talked about that planning, and the question even came up, is twenty-four enough?
Yeah.
You felt, you felt like it was, but to the mayor's point, I think everybody up here realizes the load of work that you probably have on you back there in the planning department right now with the growth and things going on. So I think if you ever see that it's not ample, I think if you came back to us and, and asked us again, you know, we're gonna try to give you the help you need.
Right, and I appreciate that. You know, I think, again, I think this will help us, and it's not just my department, there's multiple departments that are involved in this review of these plans, certainly codes and utilities and public works and several, but, so, but this will just give us a little bit more time. We'll spread out, we're still gonna, again, have the same process, we're still gonna review everything twice, just give us more time in between those two, and, and give us more time at the end to get the packets together, to get the letters sent out to those rezoning requests and things like that as well.
Questions for Kevin on this?
No, but I did, I did say to the planning department, the entire department, the other night during our meeting, that we really appreciate them back there. They have a lot to do, and I pointed it out in the planning commission meeting the other night, but I personally just thank you guys. I know this whole body feels the same way. We appreciate what you have to do back there. It's, it's quite a load.
Appreciate that.
So your whole department, not just Kevin and not just Mitch, but your whole department back there, if you would let them know, we really appreciate how hard it works.
Other comments or questions? Then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item B, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to the Title Twelve Building and Utility Codes, Chapter Eleven, Electric Code, Section Twelve dash one one zero two modifications. Are you, Kristy?
Counsel, this amendment will establish the regulations for accepting grounding installations for single-family dwellings within the town of Smyrna. So, do you have any questions?
Questions for Kristy on this? We talked a little bit about it at the workshop. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item C, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to Title Eight, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Three, Retail Sales of Alcoholic Beverages, Section Eight dash three two seven, Regulation of Sales.
This, this amendment adds Sundays from ten to, ten AM to eleven PM for the retail sale of liquor. It reflects the change in two thousand eighteen of the state's change of the law in that regard.
Questions with me on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, consideration of an ordinance to amend Title One, General Administration, Chapter One, Town Council, Section One dash one zero four, Order of Business Relative to an Update to the Town Citizens' Comment Policy.
This amendment updates the deadline for citizen comments for the Thursday, from the Thursday before the town council meeting to the last business day before the meeting.
We had some discussion about this at the workshop. Amber and Jeff and I kind of talked about it some more. We just want to make sure that every board and committee is all doing it exactly the same way. I think Amber may even be gonna get with.
Thursday.
Oh, good, Thursday. It's gonna be getting with anybody who sets agendas for each committee so that everybody's doing it the same way, and so no matter if you want to speak at Parks and Rec, or if you want to speak at town council, everybody is consistent, so.
I think this adjustment, along with signs going out earlier, it's just giving the citizens more time to get their voices heard, and I think that's, that's what we've heard, that's what they need, and I think that's what this is doing.
Well, it makes it easier for us, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
In studying our stuff, so.
Well, it makes it easier, in my, in my regard, I like hearing from folks and hearing what they, what they think about some of these agenda items well in advance of the meeting. So that's what I like about it. I think it makes my job a little easier, because we actually hear what people think.
Yeah, more time to respond to.
Right.
Okay. Questions on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything under other tonight, Amber, Jeff?
Not for me.
Okay. Rex? Status reports?
Good news, Mayor, Council. The April state share tax, we received seven hundred and eighty-five thousand and eighty-four dollars. April local sales tax, we received one million eight hundred and seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. Local's a little bit under budget, but the state shared is over budget, and combined, we're very, very close to the budget.
Okay. Questions for Rex? Okay. Thanks, Rex. Anyone, department heads or directors have announcements tonight? Nope. Amber?
I believe Ms. Heather gave me a slide tonight, so just wanted to remind you guys, I guess I'll kind of be reminding from here through up to race time for our Top Gun Night Run. It's gonna be held Friday, September thirteenth at seven thirty at the Lee Victory Recreation Park. It's a certified course. We've got food and live music, a band at the finish line. We usually have about seven hundred and fifty runners. We're gearing up and fundraising right now for this race, and then also registration is open, so we would encourage you guys to come out, sign up, come run with us. This has become, quickly become a great event and a community favorite, so we would welcome everybody to come on out and enjoy.
Last year, we started something new with food, is that there's no charge for the food, so.
Yes.
Middle Tennessee Electric.
They did their grilled cheese.
Did their grilled cheese, and we have some that do donuts, and they have their energy drinks, and so all sorts, but we're trying to add to that this year, so.
We are.
Yeah, and even if you're not running, you can come out and enjoy the fun.
That's all I've got.
Jeff?
First of all, before I get into my slides, just kind of want to put out condolences for glorified department members, engineer Brian Martin, the loss of his son this week, so prayers and thoughts are with him and his family. The first slide, I've got several on here. Check out some of these fun programs in June. June fourteenth, Community Volleyball Games, be at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. You can even play in the sand there, so you won't hurt your feet. June fourteenth and the twenty-eighth is the June in the Creek, from nine to ten thirty AM at Kedron Church is where they'll be meeting out there for that. June sixteenth, Camp Fire and Night Hike from seven PM to nine thirty at Sharp Springs Natural Area. And we have the Father's Day Camp Fire and Night Hike, that's the one I just did, and yeah, that's the Father's Day version. For more information, if you would, you can email soac dot group at townofsmyrna.org, or call the SOAC at six one five four five nine ninety-seven ten. Next, the Summer Feeding Program two thousand twenty-four is underway at various sites around Rutherford County, part of the Rutherford County Schools Food Program. All children under eighteen eat free. Some sites are dine-in only, and two are pickup only, no meals served on June nineteenth or July fourth. And for locations, times, and menus, you can visit And then last, last week, everyone had a great time at the Smyrna Police and Fire Youth Academy. Kids enjoyed a full week of learning about safety and having fun. Special thank you to meteorologist with WKRN, Shelby Mack, for her presentation, and also, obviously, to the Smyrna Police and Fire Department, all of their member for continuing to make the youth academy a success. How many years has this been, Chief?
Twenty-three, sir.
Twenty, twenty-three years, and so I know that my kids went through it, and everybody's just enjoyed it, and they, all the firemen, policemen put a, a lot of time and smiles into the work, and we just really appreciate them. And that is all that I have.
Talking about the feeding program, there's a lot of kids that rely on those meals, and the other thing that I would say is, the boxes that we see around town for the non-perishable food items, I've driven by some lately that are pretty empty, so that's something that you feel compelled or the need to do. I think it would be very much appreciated by some that are in some real need, that are our neighbors and, and our friends here in our community. So I don't think it's really hard to pick up one extra bag of stuff to drop by one of those locations. To me, almost every time I go by, somebody is stopped. Doesn't look like they're putting in, looks like they're having to take out, so.
And of course, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers, and especially my father, Dick Peach. Appreciate all that he's done for me and countless others.
Jeff, I know you said that's all you had, but why don't you give everybody an update about your mom?
Uh, yes. Unfortunately, mom broke her hip last week, so we've been at the hospital and now into rehab, so we just ask for your continued prayers as she tries to heal and get her back on her, on her feet, literally.
We wish her the best.
Yeah.
Ben? Rachel?
Um, it's a couple, so I do have a slide, and it's for the Smyrna Juneteenth Celebration. It will be this Saturday, June the fifteenth, at the Hilltop Rosenwall Park, which is at five sixty-five Mason Tucker Drive, and it will be from two PM until eight PM. It is a family-friendly event. There will be food trucks, local vendors, activities for kids. There will also be adult bingo. There will be line dancing, and we have confirmed that Maharry Medical College will be bringing, will be servicing anyone who wants to come out, and they're giving vaccines, so flu vaccine, COVID vaccine, things of that nature. And there is also a nonprofit organization that will be providing prenatal information as well. So this year, the celebration is honoring individuals who are in the medical profession, who have been in that profession for at least ten years or so. So we will be recognizing those individuals as well, and it is a community event, so we are asking and encouraging everyone to come out and participate. You don't have to come and stay all day, you can stay for a little while, or if you want to stay all day, bring your chairs and your tent. There will be entertainment for all. will be entertainment for all. And I would also next like to thank the Smyrna Senior Activity Center, and Ms. Cheryl Black, and Fran Dunn, and Patsy Brown for inviting me out. I actually went there today and talked about the Juneteenth holiday, and what it's about, and how it became a federal holiday. So I want to thank them for that opportunity as well. And let's see, had the opportunity to attend the Simply Smyrna this week, and I'm sure that was probably somebody's slide, so I won't steal your thunder, and attended the Seward Landing groundbreaking yesterday, and that was an exciting event, and glad to be a part of that as well. And I do have one personal note. I don't generally do personal notes, but I felt like this was exciting enough that I did want to share. So my son, Gabriel, who is 16 years old, has, was nominated by one of his teachers at Smyrna High School, and he is going to be participating in the National Youth Leadership Forum for Business Innovation. And so at the end of this month, he will get the opportunity to go to Yale University for an eight-day business program. And so he'll be able to take a business idea and formulate it all the way through, do branding, marketing, and also figure out how to fund that business. And so I'm very excited for him to have this opportunity. And I'd also like to extend condolences, and lastly, but not least, to say Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers out there. Hope that you all enjoy your day. That's all I have.
Hey, She?
Um, coming up, Mike Moss is going to have some problems.
I want to send a birthday wish out to Kay Arnold. Today's her birthday, and she's been one of the major rocks in the Parks Department for many, many years. And Kay's going to be retiring at the end of this month, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, July 1st.
July 1st, and-
We're celebrating on the Friday.
Okay. But she's just been, you know, very integral to the Parks Department over the years, and will be missed. I've got a love where you live display up there, and I'm going to integrate another love where you live with putting shop local. You can love where you live by shopping local. You know, the gentleman out on Seven Oaks Boulevard-
Mr. Proctor.
Mr. Proctor does a terrific job of picking up in his neighborhood. And, you know, we should all kind of, you know, take that on, and maybe if we were to do things like that, other people would notice, and they would stop littering altogether. That would also fall under being kind, wouldn't it? So let's be kind. I have one more. My eldest son's birthday is Friday. Young Hank just keeps ticking away those years. That's all I've got.
Tim?
Condolences to Brian Martin and his family. Raquel, congratulations on Gabriel. He's always been such an impressive young man.
Thank you.
I think there's just more to come for him. You know, for me, it's good to be back. It was actually good to drive a car today. I didn't say too many bad words on the way to work. I've got a new-
But did others say bad words to you?
I was driving, I was driving like I had a new knee, I'll tell you that.
Okay, okay.
So I was observing all the speed limits and distance following, but it is good to be back. And I do have one slide tonight, and that's to ask everyone to come out and help us celebrate Independence Day at Lee Victory Park on Wednesday, July 3rd, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We'll have live music, food vendors, inflatables, train rides, and of course, the fireworks show at Dark. And Chief, your guys, what you do, it puts us on the map here in the state of Tennessee as far as fireworks shows go. So thank you for that. And that's it.
Great. Jerry?
HG, you have a birthday tomorrow?
He does.
Used to.
Happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, the, congratulations to Gabe. That's an awesome honor. I know you're proud of him. He's a good kid. Every time you see him, he's always got a smile and very kind. So you have raised him well. The thoughts and prayers also to the Martin family, and also to the Victory family, to Tim and Pam, and the loss of their mom. Ms. Victory used to come out all the time to softball games, and we always was, she was just always so sweet and kind. So my thoughts and prayers for that family as well. I think, yep, I do have. Boat Day is coming up on June 22nd. It's going to be the 16th Annual. It's going to be at Jefferson Springs at 9:00 to 1:00. They're going to have free kayaking and canoe rides for all ages, family-friendly events, educate the community on the importance of water and quality and boat safety. Smyrna Outdoor Activity Center staff will be on hand to provide instructions. And so there'll also be multiple agents who will provide fun and hands-on education for the activities of children. This is just below the house where I live at, and I go down there every year to watch it. And I tell you, it is a big event. We have kids and adults coming from all over. I've seen some that come in from Murfreesboro and that I know, and Laverne and all. So they really enjoy this event, and they do a good job putting it on. So if you get a chance, even if you don't want to get wet, feel free to come out and watch, and you'll enjoy it. So thanks for that group for putting that on. Mayor, that's all I got.
Great. Steve?
Molly, a couple of things. Raquel, also congratulations to Gabe. I'm going to be honest, as you were reading off what he gets to do, I thought, that sounds like a lot of work. So I don't know if he realizes what he signed up for, but I admire him for taking that all, because when you start talking about develop the plan, and then all the aspects of it, and then how to fund it, I was like, there's departments dedicated to that at most companies, you know? So very impressive. Also, I want to wish all the fathers out there Father's Day. I'm fortunate enough to have my dad here local, just a few miles away, so I get to see him many times a week, and I appreciate his friendship now. It's different, it changes as you get older, so I appreciate his friendship now. Also, I've got a slide. It looks like my counterparts at Nissan got to visit Fire Station One. I don't know, it doesn't say when this happened, Chief. Did this, was it last week?
It was last Monday.
Last Monday, got to visit Fire Station One. I'm assuming they got to see that new Arrow apparatus and get to talk about that. And so it says here that the Fire Department enjoyed discussing their equipment and hosting the Nissan delegation. A lot of folks probably don't know that Nissan has their, has a small fire department inside the plant, but they're only staffed pretty much to deal with small things inside the plant. Anything beyond that's going to fall to our Fire Department. And we do have a Fire Department, I don't know if it's technically on the property, but it's right adjacent to the property at the end of Inon Springs. But our chief and our Fire Department has to be ready to respond to all manners of potential issues at a plant as large as Nissan. So they've got some very large warmers, heaters there that dry and cure the paint. They've got a lot of opportunities for calamity, which we have avoided. And I appreciate you guys always there on guard to protect us, so appreciate that. That's all I got.
Mark?
I'll have a slide here to show. That's the Simply Smyrna Celebration that took place this last Saturday evening, and you can see everybody there with their shorts on, sweating their, sweating pretty profusely because, no, it was not hot. It was actually pretty comfortable. So myself, Steve, Mary Esther, Jerry, Raquel, HG, Jeff Peach, and Chief Irvin there in the picture. And so we all enjoyed it, and if I missed anybody, I'm sorry. But Carpe Artista puts this event on. Doesn't Vanessa have a big hand in that, HG, or do you know?
She does.
So Vanessa Haley is one that also helps organize a lot of that stuff, so shout out to Vanessa for that. Ron Alley over at Carpe Artista, we appreciate everything he does for our town. There are condolences mentioned, Ms. Victory that passed away. To Gabe, congratulations. Good job. We failed to remember to Mike Sparks's sister, Vicky. I know we all, as soon as the cameras went off in the last meeting, we looked at each other, so we forgot to mention her. So Mike Sparks's sister passed away. She'd had a lot of health ailments, and she has gone on to heaven. So we wish Mike's family and the loss of his sister all of our condolences. To the Martin family as well, we mentioned that tonight. I'm going to help Steve out right here because he forgot, but Connie and Pam, his wife, had birthdays last week on the same day. So Connie, I remembered. Pam, I remembered.
Yeah, I'm in trouble. I don't know if you helped me or not. If you had forgotten two, we would be okay.
We love our wives dearly, so we want to both, right, together, wish them the happiest belated birthday of all on camera. So, and Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. I wish my father was still here for me to tell them that. But to those of you who still have your fathers, love them, hug them, tell them how much you care about them, because one day they won't be here, and you'll miss them tremendously. Happy Father's Day to everybody. That's all I got.
Thanks. So I have a couple of slides. Recently, I got to meet with the new Consul General, Watanabe of Japan, and I think many of us, over the years, have gotten to meet with the different Consul Generals. So we have had a lot of discussion about our continued relationship with Zama and with Nissan and the other Japanese businesses here in town. So we look forward to a continued partnership. A few have mentioned the Seward's Landing groundbreaking, and we were super excited to be able to participate in that yesterday. And for those of you that don't know, that's the 44 acres that is there at Sam Ridley and Lowry Street. And Steve did a little research and found that we've had that property since about 1975. So we've been waiting a little while to find just the right project with just the right group of developers, and I think we have really found the right ones. We are super excited.
A piece, a little bit more there. So Rex actually did the research, so give credit to Rex. But we paid $169,000 for that property, and then sold it at $1,755 per acre. That's what we paid for it when we bought it, to give you an idea of how much investment.
How long did it take them to buy it?
Well, we bought first, it was several different tracts, but three of them, 1975, and then the fourth one was in 86.
I think Sam overpaid for it from that far back.
If you think about that, I mean, that's $1,700 an acre back in 75 was a lot of money.
Well, it helped to pay for our fire station, the sale of the property.
That's right. The sale of the property is helping to fund that fire station on Jefferson Pike. Very interesting. I did not know, many of us, we were talking and trying to figure out how long has it been here. And of course, we go to HG because he's not the oldest, but the longest-serving. So we said, he's gonna know, Jerry's the oldest. HG's gonna know, but HG didn't remember. He said it predates me.
That's about the time Sam Ridley Parkway came in.
Yeah.
And I think it was acquired at that time as they were acquiring the property for the Parkway itself.
Well, you know, the thing that struck me is back in 1975, somebody had the vision and the foresight, and not a lot of councils and mayors since then have protected this piece of property and held out to get something that was worth the property. And now we've got that development coming. I know a lot of people are going to say it's just another development, but I think this one is more special than just another development.
Great. And for those of you that don't know, it's going to be a mixed-use destination, not only for our citizens, but also for visitors. It's going to have, currently, we're looking at two medical office buildings set up with about 400,000 square feet of space, 250,000 square feet of street-level retail, a boutique hotel, 75 for-sale townhomes. Currently, the ones that we can announce are Starbucks, Wawa, Jonathan's Grill, a national grocer, and I saw a list today that I'm not allowed to talk. I see Heather giving me the don't say, but the other things that are coming, I think you all will be really excited about. So-
Amphitheater walking trails.
That's right. Amphitheater, walking trails, and it's going to talk a little bit about the history of Seward's Air Force Base, which I think is exciting.
I was going to call that out. The picture almost right in the middle of the screen there shows a WWII fighter plane on a platform. And that is part of the design and is planned to be there, which I think ties everything together with our Cusman Memorial, and location to Seward's and the Air Force Base itself, the naming rights, everything. It just kind of pulls it all together. So I was excited when I saw the brochure and saw that. I was like, I hope that's not just a rendering.
And some pretty cool water feature stuff, too, so.
Yeah.
Next, the Smyrna Event Center was happy to host a stop on the Blue Raider Blitz Tour recently, and we enjoyed getting to hear from head coach Derek Mason. And I think if you walked away there not excited, then something was wrong, because he sure is a go-getter. So we look forward to MT issue events and MT, the Event Center hosts various events throughout the year, and if there's an event you'd like to have held, we would be happy to talk with you about that. And all you have to do is call the Event Center to book that. Stay in the know. One of the things I think we've been hearing and seeing on social media is, hey, I used to get these texts or these emails. Well, when we changed over to our new webpage, that all had to be redone. So if you want to get e-notifications via email, text, or both with the Town of Smyrna, you can receive notices about public meetings, Parks and Rec, Event Center lunch menu, and Public Works, about the brush truck. That's the one I keep seeing the most. When's the brush truck coming? When's the brush truck coming? So all you need to do is sign up for e-notifications on the Town of Smyrna website, which is www.townofsmrna.org. And I think it's on the main page, right there. So all you've got to do is click it and sign up.
I just went there, and literally it popped up and said, sign up here. So it's actually there, and I'm signing up right now.
Yep. So if you want to stay in the know about what's going on, that's where you can do it.
Congratulations to Gabe. I think he'll have a busy summer. I think that'll be exciting, so.
Anything else, Counsel? Like to wish those dads out there, and those that have stepped in to be surrogate dads, might not be the one that is the natural dad, but I know there's a lot out there that have stepped up. So Happy Father's Day to each one of you. And if nothing else, then we are adjourned.